What's the process of that?
Okay.
I didn't see it on the.
Well, no.
I'm still working.
You can certainly ask about.
Yes.
In their prosecutions.
They'll tell you what they.
But I gave them my note.
She may cover that.
I was on a day that he or.
What's happening with the city and where we're at.
So is.
Okay.
And be a chance to talk about that.
Yeah, things.
Yeah.
We might have to do. Up through. And then I know. And I don't see it. Unless she may took it, it's a.
It's probably the most communities people I've seen in the last four or five meetings.
Okay.
We might get one person.
Yeah, I I attended once because my. I'm seventeen, twenty eighteen, because my son was expressing interest in their planning. This place. And I but I think it was about this many, about six of us.
Yeah, they usually read most days.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Just come.
Although it. Train gun.
Which is unfortunate. It may appear formal, but it's rather involved.
Okay.
Really, I think it's the city council meetings where all the action happens. It's this level where you.
Yeah.
We touch on some things, but nothing crazy. Susan, the city's long term. Planning, it's like a two hundred page document. It's a pretty interesting read.
Okay. Okay.
One term development. Like it's ten or fifteen years.
Okay. Well, isn't that the main thing that we're working on this next year is the next?
Um, I mean.
Citizens.
We touched.
Okay.
And then I can. We don't go over it every time we're here, so we may not talk about it again for a while. But.
Because that's where they were having some of the meetings about a year ago is to get some input on their.
And they had an outside consultant. So yes, we talked about what they found. But yeah, if you can get a hold of that.
We have seven meeting there. Or they other seems like I do. Did did we have anybody? Let us know they wouldn't? Hi Shane.
Hey. Welcome.
Thanks.
It's a little different up here. Why is?
Must have to kind of look at.
This auto framing. That it's trying to do so. You get sleep sick because of the cam on.
I'm I'm really not going to watch that unless there's something up there. I'd help you, but. I'm really technologically challenged. Like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Cheney Planning Commission for Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five to order. And since our last meeting, we haven't met for a while. We have added a a few additional members. And so I'd like to. Shane Cameron, if you could tell us a little bit about yourselves. And then the rest of us are going to do the same for you.
All right. Hey, everyone, I am Cameron McCormick. I've lived here in Cheney since two thousand eight. I live down in the Solnave general area. I teach geography at Spokane Falls Community College. And when Mr. Turberville left, I was thinking because his wife was my son's teacher as well, so there's a slight connection there. Look forward to serving the community and making this place a great place to live.
Awesome. Thank you, Cameron. Shane?
Sure. Shane Ellis. Gosh, first came here around like oh, six. I was a student at E W. So so I'm alum and. Most familiar role would have been the last twelveish years with the city of Cheney. I was the building official for ten of those years. And left it a little over a year ago, and now I work for company called the American Wood Council, heavily involved in building code. And very happy to be back serving the citizens.
Ron, you're next.
Ron Valencia. Started on Cheney at going to Eastern as a student, and now I've been on the planning commission for, I think this is my second year.
My name is Sean Rickenson. I work out at Fairchild, been out there about ten years as an IT manager. I live here in Cheney, have been here since twenty twenty and look like I'm going to stick around a while. Got a few years to go and when I can do what I can to help commission, do what we can to make Cheney a better place.
And I'm Rick Mount. I've been in Cheney since nineteen seventy two. When my dad retired from the Air Force and we moved up to Cheney because we had a lot of family up here. Went graduated from Cheney High School, graduated from Eastern Washington, well, didn't graduate from Eastern Washington University, went there three years. And I finished my degree elsewhere. And I am an attorney by trade. Soon to be hanging up that shingle. Right now I sit as the prosecutor for the city of Beverly Heights. So we welcome everyone. Glad to have you here for our meeting. We'll go on to item number two, citizen participation.
I hang thirty five years since nineteen forty two.
Yeah, beat me. But can you come come up and by the mic? And we got your name. Can you give us your address, please?
My name is Joyce Schmidt, and I live at six oh nine West six three. At Cheney, nine nine zero zero four. Um, I've got a couple of projects I'd like you people to consider. I do a lot of walking. I developed emphysema, and so to build my lungs up, I start walking. And I walk about two and a half miles in the morning and at night. And most of my walking is done naturally from Sixth Street to the college and through the college campus. And then back home. Well, I'm noticing a lot of students. I say they're students I don't know. Cars are being parked in front of crosswalks. And my project that I would like you to consider is painting the yellow lines on the curbs again. I. I took pictures of these cars. And one, one of the cars. Wheelchairs could not be accessible to it. There would be no way they could enter that sidewalk. And it's a hazard for the people that are driving down the street. Because you have to get out so far so you can see if. Traffic is coming or not, or if they're supposed to stop, if they stop. So that's number one project. I would like the curves. Repainted. Then my second project is I don't know what Cheney has against veterans. But I have asked. And wondered why our veterans park across from the. Fire department does not get watered. I've been told it's on a different. Better banks.
On a different irrigation system.
Yeah.
But it's that one's not unfortunately. Yeah, that one is Moose. Moose Sutton and Salnave are the ones that are on file for.
Well, they need to do something about the veterans. Eastern, I don't care if it's on a different line. Eastern is just across the street. And their lawns are beautiful. We let our veterans park burn up. It got I was going to complain at the last commission or councilman meeting, but it rained. And it greened, so I couldn't complain. I was going to ball the city out, but here again. The planning commission needs to figure out how to get some of that recalled water or borrow it from Eastern or whatever. But do something for that park. Our veterans are very important, and they are especially to me. I see no reason why that park should get burned up. And it was it was burned up this summer. All summer long unless it rained and you know, we didn't get much rain. Thank you for letting me speak.
Our pleasure. Thanks for coming and bringing those to our attention. It's interesting you bring up the curbs because when I pulled out of my house this morning. Right on my corner, there was a person that was parked right to the corner. I noticed the same thing. I live, my house is on the corner. And I noticed the same thing. I had to get quite a ways out in order to be able to see traffic because. People have a tendency at the college to park all around my house because it's convenient. I don't mind that, but it would be nice. In fact, I was going to ask Todd tonight, can I just buy the the yellow paint and paint the curb? I I know where it's supposed to go. It would help a a great deal. So appreciate your comments and. We'll throw that out to the city council, one member who happens to be sitting here. Thank you, Vince. And Todd, he's the one that more so now controls the budget than and he did before. So we appreciate your comments and thank you for coming. Any other citizen participation? Bonnie? Please state your name and your address.
Bonnie Mager, one five two two zero West Dairy View Lane. And I'm representing Cheney Cohousing. We our plan came before you a few years back and you. Gave it your stamp of approval and we're still working to get the land put into the urban growth boundary so that we can go forward with our. Cohousing project. So we're here tonight excited to see that there's going to be a presentation and hoping to move forward with. One of the maps showing our all of the maps actually showing our land on there. Since the city council had already moved to put in an application to have that done. It was kicked forward and we've waited all this time, jumped through all the right hoops, and we're hoping to see it come to fruition. Thanks.
Bonnie, can, since we've got a couple of new members.
Sure.
Actually, probably. Everybody's new but me since you guys did the presentation. Can you give us the Reader's Digest version of of what it? What you're talking about?
There's a parcel, a ten acre, two five acre parcels on the corner of Normal Park and Paradise. And in twenty nineteen, we started with coming and meeting with Todd and the city. About where we should purchase land in order to put in a co housing project. Our our joking mantra is we are not a cult. This is not a this not a compound. This is not a commune. This is just a group of folks who create a neighborhood. Who have their own individual homes and then like a community building that they can cook in or. Build a little bit smaller homes and have a couple of bedrooms for company when they come, that kind of thing, share. Things like create more of a park setting, more of a P U D type thing. And so we they the city and then the county came into it. They proposed, the county proposed a land swap. It got into the middle of some kind of a political deal in Olympia, and so that got sort of stalled at the county had been. Had problems before by and got themselves in legal trouble, so they wanted to kick it to this planning, this. Comp plan review. So that's set us back about five years. And we're really eager to get going and we think it would be a really good project. If you look up Coho Coho USA. On Google, you can read all about it. It's a really great way to live, especially for older people, and we want to have a multi generational, but. People know their neighbors, unlike a lot of us grew up knowing our neighbors, but. A lot of young people don't know their neighbors, and that creates more community. People who go into co housing tend to be more community minded. So it and we need the housing here in Cheney, frankly, and it would be, I think, a win, win, win for everybody. So any question?
Thank you, Bonnie.
I actually do have a question.
Okay, we do have one question.
Because I'm one of those people that definitely was not around in this role. With that, you're talking about this, it was was already set in process and that council had made a decision and and as basically a matter of putting in the urban growth boundary, and this will be a partially a question for Todd. You also mentioned a community space in the middle, so I I'm just out of curiosity whether or not. When that's brought in, in theory, presuming that that's definitely happening forward. What would the zoning designation be in? Is that going to support that that community shared space that you're intending within that zone?
Well, we'd have to take a look at. Obviously, when we bring something in, we bring it in pretty much, or we've had in the past, bring it in as an R one, and then you zone out from there. I I think we'd have to look at at what that zoning includes, whether it would be kind of middle housing or something to that end that would be be that particular zone.
I think I think that might be a good thing for staff to start taking a look at so that if. When that day comes, hopefully for your sake, that that that's not an additional roadblock.
We had we had spoken to Brett before that too, and we were probably looking at going with a P U D. But we're certainly open to a lot of whatever the zoning requires, thinking about twenty to thirty homes. And like I said, we we sort of went through all the hoops of trying to find out where Cheney wants to grow, and the most reasonable way. For Cheney to grow is north towards Spokane, so we purchased land there right on the boundary and. As a result of, you know, their recommendations and also the county at the time was all for it and looking at. At ways we could accomplish it. Unfortunately, something else happened and that delayed that part of it as well. So. Anyway, yeah, anybody who would like to give us a call or like I say, if you Google it, you can find out all about these kinds of housing. Developments. Okay, thank you.
I can't believe Olympia got in the way. Sorry, I'm showing showing my biases. Any other citizen participation tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes of the February tenth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting or commission meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the February tenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Item number four, discussion item twenty twenty five dash zero five comprehensive plan update.
I'll I'll kind of take the intro here. Ryan from Nexus will be here to do a PowerPoint presentation about where we're at. Certain members, we we did have a council planning workshop. We talked a little bit about it. Gathered some comments from council, so tonight we have kind of a revised map and then updated where we're at. First of all, thank you for being so patient. I mean, it's been a long from all the way from February, and then we we're just now sitting here. We have three new members here, and then also we're trying to kind of reorganize where we're at as well. So I want to. Introduce Dan Ferguson. He has taken over the Assistant Public Works Director portion of it. A lot of my tasks or most recently all of my task to that end, trying to get everything done and also with Brett's Harding. Terry Morning has stepped up to the kind of the planning and overseeing the planning. I do have one staff member that is on Zoom right now, and that's Travis Bonwell, and he is a great support. So I think we feel we have a good team. Sue's always been one of the best players around to to help us keep us in line. So. I think moving forward, we're going to have a lot of work to do with the comprehensive plan, so I'm I'm hopeful that we'll bring every month at least. Whether it will be Ryan or just staff members kind of bringing an update, talking maybe about the chapters ahead. As you well know, or maybe not, that they they had a deadline of June of twenty twenty six, and they extended that on. To the end of twenty twenty six. I think it was December, right? Right on. Yeah, so we still have time. We're going to be presenting at least every month an update and then also. We are looking at some ordinance changes along the way, partially because of legislative changes due to. ADUs, some of those restrictions, and then also what we're looking at is some type of co housing, co. Legislation coming down that we need to envelop into our into our code. So. We'll be moving on that. We do have a lot of changes in in the in the current C M C or maybe not changes. There's there's just. Little tweaks here and there for better clarity as we move through those codes. So with that.
Todd, when you say they. I don't know who you're referring to. Are you referring to the county, the state?
Referring for referring to the county. Or I'm sorry, the county takes over the comprehensive plan, so there there will be a climate element that that we have. Actually, small cities signed up with the county to tell them to develop the 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 climate plan, and then we will adopt it as part of the county. As far as other things like like co housing, those are an A D U. Those are coming down from the legislative through through the R C Ws that we.
I I don't know A D U.
Oh, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling unit. Yeah, please correct me on that. I I get carried away with. So yes, we will have some. Terry's been going through the ordinance. We've been going through the ordinance. We have we had a few kind of tweaks here and there, so it's a good time to kind of focus. And take a look at our some of our ordinance and clean up some some language, and we do have some very old ordinances that we want to kind of take a look as well, so.
Thanks, Todd.
I'll bring up Ryan if we're ready. Apologize, Ryan. This machine is broke. Sue is going to take over and guess she'll just have to cue her on the next.
Okay, notice it got moved around a bit. Sue, do you you want to advance the slides or shall I?
If you can do it from there, I don't think you can.
There's nothing here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a USB port? Because I have a a. We can. Otherwise, I'll just give you a little nod that works for you. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, everybody, for inviting me here. Sorry if I'm not able to see Shane and Ron over there. Let me introduce myself, and I did do the best to wear my Mariners, much as I could this evening. Blue and green. Ryan Hughes, Principal of Nexus Planning Services. We are a very small boutique planning firm in Spokane. And we were sharing our Eastern cred earlier, so I will say I'm a two thousand three alum of Eastern Washington University's Urban Planning Program. Took some geography classes while I went along the way, and another exciting or fun part of my program was I was involved in a. Main Street revitalization program called Pathways to Progress. Some of you may recall this program in downtown Cheney during that time. Learned a lot, and I feel like. There's a lot of opportunity going forward with similar types of programs in Cheney. So my goal for us tonight is to have a conversation. So some of this that I'm going to share with you, you may have already heard before. I don't know how many of. Y'all were in some of the presentations that we've been given earlier, the workshop, etc. But feel free to stop at any time if you have any questions. If I use a acronym, which I probably will. That is unfamiliar, please, please go ahead and stop me. As well as, I don't know if it came across in any of your agenda materials, but we prepared what we called a goals poll. For you all this evening, which is simply. A mini poll of language that exists in the comprehensive plan, either exists currently or is being proposed. For the update of the comprehensive plan. One is regarding housing. One is the other one is land use. So. I don't know if if you don't have it with you tonight, that's fine. We'll go ahead and punt for the next meeting, but it's very going to be very simple. Do I like? Do I dislike? Do I want to change the language? And and I'll and I'll describe what I'm talking about in in a minute. So go ahead and. Advance your slide there, please, Sue. So basically, what we're going to cover tonight is kind of the one oh one of comp plans and kind of where. You know, where the what the state has to say about this periodic update cycle. As Todd mentioned, we've been doing this for a little while now, and we've had the opportunity to have some engagement with the community. I think appropriate engagement has been conducted, and we've learned a lot. We've gotten a lot of good feedback, which has been guiding a lot of the. Decision making along the right on along the way, especially in regards to the future land use map and then some of the policy language that is being crafted as we go along. And then if we have time, we can talk about the goals, which I think might be useful. So what is a comp plan? Comp plans are. The comprehensive plans in the state of Washington are governed or provided for in R C W thirty six seventy A. Which is the Growth Management Act. It really just defines what is required. In terms of city policies encapsulated in their comp plan. So there are. Six, seven required elements which are listed there, land use, housing, and housing is really special and important because. This time around, we are actually needing to do a lot more in regards to housing than we have previously in the state of Washington. Nineteen nineties was when. Comp plans or or I'm sorry, the Growth Management Act was adopted. At that time, there was a requirement for planning for. Or considering all economic segments or considering all incomes. Now we have to actually plan and facilitate housing for all economic segments. So I'll get into a little bit of that. CAP facilities, utilities, transportation, economic development, parks, open space and recreation. They are listed as required. There is a caveat with legislature that says if funding is available to support. Parks and economic development, then they're required. If funding is not available, then then they are considered optional. Fortunately, with Cheney, we have some resources to support both the parks and economic development. New to twenty twenty six, as Todd alluded. Uh, new to twenty twenty six, as Todd alluded, uh House Bill eleven eighty-one, which was adopted, I want to say in twenty-three, went into effect, I believe in July of twenty twenty-three, um required all cities and counties in the state of Washington to adopt a new climate element. Uh, what's interesting about this is because it was adopted in two twenty twenty-three by the state legislature, all of the West Side communities had already been conducting their comprehensive plan because they had a due date of December of twenty twenty-four. So none of the West Side jurisdictions actually had to complete their climate element. Um, the legislature gives gives them until twenty twenty-nine to complete their element, uh which means that Central Washington, Eastern Washington communities have basically been the uh the guinea pig when it comes to climate planning and climate element and, you know, which has its good and bad. It means that we've, you know, don't have a lot of precedent of what that means in terms of what is a climate element. We have House Bill eleven eighty-one, which is meant to sort of guide communities on on what they should be doing, calculating greenhouse gas emissions and um looking at vulnerability assessments and whatnot. Um, like Todd mentioned, I believe the county and their consultants will be coming to present before you in November or December uh the work that they're doing because it's been primarily um something the the county has um been doing. Yep, uh so optional elements, which is included in Cheney's comp plan are sustainable sustainability, technology, culture and the arts. One thing we've been uh suggesting is a bit of a a streamlining approach. I know some of these thoughts and some especially the optional elements were uh introduced, not the last round of comp plan, but I think the the time before that. Um, so what we've suggested for your all's review is a bit of a streamlined approach, um where some of these ideas around sustainability, technology, culture and the arts um will be incorporated in some of the uh what would I call the required or the core elements. So this is a complicated slide, um which pretty much tells us we have required checklist items, meaning that every ten years, when we do a periodic update, this is all cities and counties throughout the state, the legislature via the Department of Commerce provides a list of changes that occurred within the Growth Management Act, right? So we don't do this every single year. We don't even do it every five years. It's it's about a ten-year update. Um, over the ti- over that time, all of those changes, all of those modifications, um cities and counties have to sort of ratify those or incorporate them into their local policy to be considered certified by the legislature. So the thought process behind that is to take that list, that checklist, if you will, audit that to our existing goals, policies, objectives, strategies, implementations, and see where that gap is. So we did that about a year ago. Um, it provided sort of a a nice list of, you can go to the next slide, um Sue, please. Sort of a a nice list of of items that needed to be looked at and reviewed. This is basically a summary of how many um policy items needed to be reviewed. So if you look at land use, there were a total of twelve um policies that that were sort of um not non-compliant, but but because of the update, we had to to look at them. Um, we categorize them by difficult, mid and easy, just simply the fact that some of the language is really just that. It's a language change uh in the in the the either the policy or the goal. And some of the other ones needed a little bit more um discussion with the community to really know the direction. So that summary was done. We went ahead and kicked off our community engagement, which started with an interview of stakeholders. Some of you may have been interviewed during that process. Uh, we really wanted to get the vision, orientation of where the community wanted to go. This is just a, I would say, a shortlist of of needs and ideas that came up um through those interviews. They also were, I guess, reiterated or confirmed over our discussions um in our in our community vision uh session and some of the subsequent work workshops that we participated in. So there's kind of a nice Venn diagram when we think about comp plans. Uh, on one hand, we've got sort of the statutory legislative requirements. Some of that can be colored in by what the community desires. What is their twenty-year vision? Um, and so that's why it's really important to sort of assess and discuss, you know, what is priority? Uh, we only have so much resource to focus on, so um when you did do the discussion with community members, we really asked what was the what was the priorities in in some of these items? Housing needs, um underutilized and vacant land, economic constraints, um sort of business, uh economic development. These are all themes. And so these are some of the ideas that we've been prioritizing over the period. Likewise, uh we had thirty three hundred and forty-nine completed responses back in um November of last year with online survey. Some of the questions are kind of hard to read. If you go to Cheney Plan twenty twenty-six, you can see the full uh list of results. But it really just kind of reaffirmed what we were hearing from the interviews and discussion with staff and and some of you all. Um, so the plan uh is really doing its best to reflect some of these priorities. So now we get into kind of the the technical portion of it where a twenty-year plan really has to do that. It's got to project out twenty years. So what it, you know, we put on our our crystal ball in some ways uh and w- w- what we need to do first is is look at that population. Um, so the uh OFM, which is Office of Financial Management, um sends projected population and housing allocations to all the counties. And from there, counties have to determine which percentage of that pie goes to Spokane, to Liberty Lake, to uh Airway Heights and also to Cheney. Um, so when we got that that allocation, it resulted in uh roughly three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five additional population expected in Cheney over the next twenty years. So looking at that on an average annual growth rate, it's about one percent. Um, which is, you know, it's 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 sort of kind of status quo um of what we would expect in in this region unless there are reasons for changing that that projection. So that's what what we've kind of looked at. From there, like I said, the housing allocation um suggested that, or you can hit the next button too, it looks like. Got some animation. One more. Uh, yeah, so House Bill twelve twenty, which was the the um economic segments, uh planning for all income levels or economic segments requires all cities and counties to look at not just that future population total and suggests, right? A division of family size and say, you know, we're going to need X number of houses, just in general. What it did was take it to the next level, which means not only do we have this total number of uh units that we have to plan for, now we have to break that up by income levels. And so the way they do that is um through area median income. So there's a calculation of what does the average family make, right, for their gross household income? That average is a hundred percent. So what is affordable for the average family um is a um s- a a number of units. So that calculation, which is a thirty percent, so if we typically the the calculation is a thirty percent of one's household income goes towards housing. So in Cheney, what does that look like? Maybe it's a a small, single-family home, um maybe a nicer condo or or duplex home. Um, so when we did that calculation, we saw that there were a hundred and eighty-eight um um sort of overcapacity, that meaning that the zoning for that type of one hundred percent or eighty to one hundred percent, uh we actually had the ability to build a hundred and eighty-eight more units than what was required uh for that land capacity analysis. Um, likewise, for the greater than a hundred, hundred and twenty percent AMI, um it resulted in eleven units that are that over eleven units over what we what we actually needed, quote unquote. Um, where we get into trouble is that eighty percent and below. So if you see that number, which is a negative seven oh three, simply means that we do not have enough uh zoned capacity for the number of less than eighty percent units that are necessary for that twenty twenty-year look.
So so what does that mean? Tell tell me what that means. I I am not connecting the dots.
Gotcha. So what that means is right now, and I'm 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 holding up a a future land use map, which is not your not the zoning map. And we can talk about the difference. So so future land use is a twenty-year vision. We have a zoning map, right, which is our areas of town that are zoned, you know, multifamily residential, single-family residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, et cetera. If we take the capacity analysis, meaning how many units can be built in those various types of zones, that gives us a total capacity. We subtract the existing units that are already built and that gives us this excess capacity. Does that make sense?
I I think so. So what I read on here is that we don't have enough land to fill that first category. We're short on land to be able to get to where we need in that total new capacity.
Yeah, so there's there's two approaches that that the legislature has provided. And if, yeah, House Bill twelve twenty, it's, you know, it it describes it there and it's it's really interesting because we're getting some precedence from the West Side um in the in 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 the terms of lawsuits that have been filed and appeals of comprehensive plans. Um, I could talk about that, but there are two approaches. So so either expanding the urban growth area and and annex annexing land in order to create that capacity. The other option, which is the um, I guess, the preferred option according to the legislation, according to the the language in the rule, is that we provide more capacity in our existing boundaries, meaning we upzone or we create changes in our zoning regulations to allow for those, you know, units to be built. Whereas maybe we have single, plenty of single-family, right, um units or hundred, hundred percent plus. Um, those areas could be upzoned to other types of of housing stock or how other types of densities to uh to make up for that negative. So this, so this is the approach that we've presented to council when we had a vision workshop back in December, I believe. Um, talked about how we solve this math problem and we'll get into that. So if you want to keep going forward, these are the important pieces of housing, sufficient land, housing needs of economic segments, ensuring that their areas accommodate merchant housing. So these are all parts of the legislate legislation that are required, merchant housing, shelters, permit supportive, et cetera. So so how do we approach this question, um which is really, you know, the driving crux of what a lot, lot of the comprehensive planning that's going on in the state of Washington right now? Because we've never had this level of scrutiny around our affordability in our housing. Um, meaning not only are we considering or thinking or even putting it in our future land use map, which is typical, right? We we sort of have our future land use map, but the legislation says we actually have to provide the capacity, meaning not only do we talk about programs and future land use, but we actually have to zone to accommodate um those those units this time around. So what was the approach? Uh, really wanted to allow the community to weigh in on the approach. Um, the approach was introducing three scenarios uh of how land could be upzoned, modified, changed. Really, we knew that there wasn't a lot to be changed and there wasn't a lot of demand. For example, um, you know, we weren't taking large swaths of the city and really, you know, we didn't, we didn't hear that from our interviews and from the the survey. What we heard was folks wanted to find ways to provide more housing options and create more walkability, more livability, um support downtown, support our local businesses. So this is what that kind of encapsulate. Three scenarios. First scenario talks about minimum changes necessary to meet the comp plan requirements. And when we say comp plan requirements, it's it's those units. It's the seven hundred uh units of affordability that we were really targeting, meets GMA housing while impacting uh existing land. And Cheney includes a, what's called a TOD, or Transit Oriented Development Zone. Um, that's a, that's a a particular application that looks at our transit stops and asks, you know, how can we support housing and more intense development around transit? Proposed improvements to walkability and pedestrian hotspots. Um, other policies considered, looking at the Housing Action Plan, doing a parking study and more collaboration with Eastern around housing. So the, these are the things that we went over back in December and then we reaffirmed them at the uh Mayfest event in May. Scenario two, um again, meets all of these meet GMA requirements, all of these these proposed changes meet GMA requirements. Uh, they also look at different ideas around increasing density in certain areas um to allow for more options. Again, that TOD shows up here, increases in that radius instead of a one-eighth around the transit stops, but a quarter of a mile radius, which as you can see the purple, it really expands that. Um, and then some other policies considered, car-free street um along first and along second, College Street, place-making improvements in the downtown core to improve walkability, livability and and attractiveness. Um, so these were just sort of discussion items we wanted to get feedback on. The third scenario, I do have the map here. Unfortunately, the the bits and pieces didn't get translated, still saying scenario two. Uh, but this is kind of the the go-big idea. Um, the final scenario incorporated the two previous scenarios, yet increases the amount of land used, the change of the city primarily focused on economic development. So really wanted to make sure we were, you know, go pushing the, not pushing the envelope, but really kind of focusing on ensuring that there was density in the right places that would support a walkable environment that would support our downtown businesses. So like I mentioned, December, we had our open house, roughly eighty people came to that, eighty sign-ins. We asked folks to rate those three scenarios, scenario one, two and three, around these attributes or these community community characteristics. Um, we did a bit of statistical analysis, used our eastern um degrees to perform some level of statistics and we got an average median and mode scenario. And so as you're seeing here, many of the folks preferred uh scenario three as the sort of choice, um meeting, meaning that it met all of these characteristics to the best of the ability. Fast forward to May, wanted to affirm the changes, which was this preferred future land use map and broke down in sections because we didn't want to just give somebody the map and say, oh, make a comment. We really just broke, we broke down all the different uh sections of the map and asked folks to comment and basically give us a thumbs up, thumbs down, whether you liked it or disliked the changes that were proposed. Um, as you're seeing along the continuum here, there was one, so you want to hit the the button there? Yeah, there was just the one uh area, area four, where we've got the most dislikes. And and there was some some reasons for that, um that we took back to the drawing board and made sure that we uh adapted the the future of the purp- proposed future land use map um based on those comments.
What's area four?
So area four is the high school, junior high. There was um PUD sort of subdivision in that area that had been slated for some uh middle housing um application or 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 designating, right, where where it's single-family currently proposing the future land use map to be a middle housing zone. And we got some feedback that folks didn't want to see that happen. So that's how we.
Would that be behind Crunk's field?
Uh, kind of in that. See if I can pull it up here. Focus right around the high school. This being, uh, yeah, just right in here, that would be the Golden Hills area and then you drop down into Avalon.
So so once we heard. So, so once we heard from the community, once we dialed that back a little bit, um, the result was, um, a change in the future land use map for, um, certain areas to be re-designated as middle housing. And middle housing is, I know it's a co- a new concept to many of us. Um, it's, it's sort of a, a national trend that a lot of communities are, are trying to adapt into their own uh, local regulations and land use policies, which essentially allows for more of a range of housing types, being them cohousing, units, uh, cottage housing, sort of, uh, row or um, townhouse types of development. So it provides a bit of a flexibility instead of our, you know, sort of dynamic of what we currently have in most communities, which is low density, single family, high density. Um, apartment type of units. And so there's a, a real push to support a, a range of options. And, um, this is something that I know Cheney has been studied and studying in the past, and it was, it's been promoted, and we heard a lot from community members when we did propose it, um, that they were very much in support of the idea. So that's why you're seeing, um, the changes, which are essentially proposing a designation of middle housing as well as, um, converting some of the industrial to the south, uh, southwest area to more of a mixed use designation. Um, kind of opening up the possibility of what could go on there, um, to be able to see more um, a range of development versus just kind of locked into that industrial. And it, and to remind you, this is a, this is a policy map. This isn't zoning. Um, this is, uh, what could happen. This is the, meant to be a visionary map over the next twenty years. How, how the city can change, how the, the land use policy can change over time. The only caveat to that is when I go back to mentioning about House Bill twelve twenty, there is a requirement for housing related density to be um, updated in, in the zoning to be able to meet that capacity. And if that does not, uh, does, that doesn't occur, then, uh, fortunately, the, the comp plan itself would not be certified as well. So we want to make sure we're approaching that as, as clearly and carefully as, as we, as we can, as we go throughout the next year.
When you say there's a requirement, is that a requirement by the state?
It's, it's, yeah, it's a requirement by the state legislature. In twenty twenty-one, they adopted House Bill twelve twenty, um, which requires all cities and counties throughout the, the state to, um, review their capacity and, um, determine ways of increasing affordable housing.
So I actually had a question on that. When you went over the capacity stuff, I thought that the, the biggest what we're lacking was more on the low income side of stuff, which is the high density is the ways described, not necessarily like two family. Um, not necessarily what I think middle fa- housing captures. So. Yep, so I'm right, okay.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great observation and a great question. So, so this, and, and, and we've talked a little bit about this in previous workshops. There are a number of options that the city could choose. You can, you can adopt or designate more high density and get that seven hundred units of, of affordable options um, as, as an option. Or another approach, which because we've suggested these ideas to community members through the vision, uh, workshop, through the Mayfest, you know, discussion, that, um, just re-designating into smaller units of high density was not, um, wasn't the choice that folks, you know, were directing.
The capacity issues isn't aligning what the community wants, basically.
Exactly. And so that is an option, right? We could look at existing high density. Number one, we could increase the density allowance in those zones, um. Or we can do another approach, which is sort of what we've heard from folks that they weren't interested in seeing just more large apartments going up, but having more of a, a neighborhood type of development occur that in, includes, you know, different types of housing stock.
So, so when you're looking at, probably you look at option one, was, was probably that, that fill in in the high density. Uh, on its presentation. Okay, it's the other, I just want to make sure I have stuff right in my head. Also on the capacity chart, mixed use was also in the middle, wasn't it? Uh, wasn't it considered part of that capacity, or was it?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I didn't do the capacity analysis. Um, we can look into that. I don't know how much mixed use was.
We just looked at that industrial site, uh, right off of, of Presley, um, where the cell tower is. I just wondered, just like on what, what it was considered. It seemed like it was considered like that was serving more of the middle income ranges, not necessarily in the low income ranges. But again, the capacity issues on the low income range.
So, so mixed use should, should, should factor into the calculation if there's a residential component in the mixed use. Um, but are you talking about middle, middle, middle densities or, because there's
Oh, it was just the capacity chart. Mixed use was listed on there. My, like, again, I was hoping you were going to answer it, because I, I thought that it was considered part of more the middle income. That's what it was contributing to. Um, but now we're talking about to me, I think mixed use maybe should be more applicable on, for like a high density. And if you're introducing more a mixed use, then you're increasing that density and maybe you'd be serving that capacity. But I wasn't sure if the original chart supported that.
Uh, we can, we can look into that certainly. Um, I think we're primarily focused on the residential zones because it was trying to achieve those residential unit numbers. Whereas mixed use factors into a lot of things, right? Where we have commercial on the bottom and residential on top, or some sort of horizontal mixed use development. Is that what you're kind of describing?
When I think about mixed use, I have a tendency to think about the residential factor, particularly with the downtown zone where, you know, we don't have a lot other than just commercials. So if you start introducing mixed use, to me, the biggest change is that you're introducing a density of residential units that maybe you didn't have before. So I'm just trying to get it straight in my head in terms of how it was factored for the capacity needs versus how it's factored as we're addressing the capacity needs, whether because of the state legislature itself or, or community.
Sure, sure. And I, I, I recall, this has been a year, so I recall that that mixed use was factored into those densities. And yeah, it would have been more at that, um, less than eighty percent level because the size of the units presumably, you know, and, and affordability factor.
Yeah, thank you.
Looks like there's a lot of animation. We just keep plug, keep pushing the button. There we go. So these are the changes. Middle housing designation to encourage infill of vacancy, um, provides housing options without disrupting existing neighborhood character, proximity to commercial corridors. Uh, promoting downtown walkable neighborhoods, infill development into Cheney's downtown, encouraging mixed use. This is sort of alluding to that that actual industrial to mixed use, uh, re-designation to encourage mixed use development and spur development in residential adjacent services. So, so again, you know, sometimes you've got vertical mixed use, like what we would want to see in downtown. Sometimes you see horizontal where it's, you know, commercial services and then some residential, um, in the same vicinity. So this is, I think this might answer some of the questions that you're, you're, maybe you're alluding to. So going with the future land use maps, scenario through, three subtracted from some of the, uh, feedback that we got at Mayfest. Reran the numbers again. And what this does, so our housing targets, um, were those original numbers. So that zero to eighty percent, we needed sixteen hundred roughly, um, eighty, a hundred and twenty percent, we needed two hundred ninety-four, greater than a hundred and twenty percent, we need five fifty-five, et cetera. So with that, with this proposed future land use map, you know, and the zoning applied to that, um, we actually are, um, you know, have a surplus, um, of capacity, um, for all, all segments, uh, except emergency housing, which is not really taken care of by zoning. It's more of a, um, MOU or a programmatic thing where we talk to the the, uh, hotels, um, to make sure that they are okay with utilizing their facilities as emergencies. So this was the goal, um, in terms of making sure that the proposal or the, the, the proposed land use, um, map would be, uh, justifiable or, or certifiable with the community, we are with, with commerce. That said, we've got a year roughly to discuss and, and dive into some of those specific questions. If you have specific questions about, um, you know, areas and, and maybe we want to dial back. We see eighty, a hundred and twenty percent. We've got a lot of excess capacity with the proposed changes. Um, so it's, it's still is, it still is a conversation that we hope to, to have with you all. And that just brings me to my last slide, which is, um, more of this conversational piece, which back to comp plans. Comp plans are a policy document, right? So they're non-regulatory. What comp plans do is provide guidance and direction for let reg- regulation, the zoning map, the zoning ordinance, um, programming by community. If we identify, uh, capital facilities or utilities that need to be, uh, updated, how do we go about achieving those, um, those updates or expansions or new facilities? And, uh, it's just, it's a way for the community to encapsulate its vision in, you know, for the future. And one of the most beneficial, I think, one of the best beneficial, uh, supports that the planning commission could provide as part of this is to simply look at some of our goals that are either existing there, or when it comes to housing, we actually have three new goals, um, that come out of that checklist that it would be really, um, beneficial for you all to review that. If there's anything that you feel is conflicting with the vision of Cheney, or if there's ways to color it or make it more three dimensional, meaning, you know, how does this specifically apply to Cheney? Um, we would be all ears and we want to make sure that we're, you know, what goes into that document is reflecting the community's values. Um, so at the end of the day, when we need a recommendation from planning commission to adopt, um, we've not gone off in a direction that doesn't reflect your values. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I may, I may want to probably add, when we, we talk about that little ten acre parcel, uh, to that end, that has been identified in the, in the county's plan as a, a ten acre parcel. Help me out, Ryan, on that one.
Yeah, there, and so there's a, there's a, there's a whole series of legislation that dictates urban growth area modification, expansion, and, and as Bonnie's and their um, group have experienced, it's not as clear as you would hope. Um, in the state of Washington on how expansions and, um, modifications occur. What we are finding is that the, the decision-making, a lot, most of the decision-making occurs at the county level. So even though we've, we can justify the expansion of the urban growth area um, in our comp plans and, you know, through provision of, of transportation utility infrastructure, you know, proposed zoning, proposed development regulations. It isn't until it gets to the Board of County Commissioners, um, to adopt or to modify the urban growth areas that it becomes a, an actual modification. Um, so what, the way I understand they're approaching their future land use map or their UGA modifications is they are currently conducting an environmental impact statement which develops three maps throughout the whole county. Uh, one is a no change scenario, and then there's two other maps that are change scenarios. Map number two incorporates all of the requests of all of the communities and individuals, um, for urban growth area amendments. Uh, you can go on their website, you can see the map, what they do with that, because at the end of the day, they've got to decide a preferred scenario, just like we've asked Cheney to decide on a preferred, um, future land use map. Board of County Commissioners are going to have to do the same thing. How that gets decided and, and what factors are play, at play in that um, is a conversation that, that is between commerce and the county and legislature. And it's, 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 you know, it's, it's, I, I wish that the cities could just be the, the driving voice in that, but unfortunately, um, the way I understand it, the counties are the ones that are making those decisions.
Bonnie, you raise your hand.
Yeah, I would just like to say that we've had many talks with the county and that as a commissioner, when we did this, I've been involved in this for many years. The review is actually the place where the city actually has the most input. The in-between times, it's all left to the county. You can make your application, but it basically comes down to the five commissioners to decide whether or not this is going to go forward. But in this process, by having a map, which the other small cities who've wanted to either expand or, um, address a, uh, a change to their urban growth boundary, they must have their map there for them to understand that Cheney has, wants to grow north, what lands they want to put in there, what lands they would take out as opposed to expo- expanding, rather just renegotiating the land use, um, say from south to the north. And that, um, we are very much at a disadvantage right now because the other small cities have done that. We have not put forth a map that includes the land that went through the other process and which you already have an application in to have included. This is the perfect place commissioners actually kick the can down the road, saying that we should do it at this timeframe. And that has enabled Scott Chesney to, to come to two different meetings and make a basic announcement to everybody else that Cheney already can incorporate all of, all that they need in the existing city limits, which would exclude our land and would exclude any additional land that we have for years talked about wanting uh, in order to have to go. So without that, and I think Paul, uh, on the city council, Paul Schmidt, uh, spoke to that very eloquently at either the last meeting or the meeting before. That we are really shooting ourselves in the foot if we do not have a map showing that that's the preferred, you know, to, to readjust that UGA.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Okay, moving on to item number five, commissioner reports. Joyce took my commissioner report, um, already. So, um, I, I just want to say, um, the pool was great. Had the great opportunity to be able to use it with my grandchildren. In fact, I didn't even use all of this passes that I purchased, um, but, um, you, you know, I, I think it's, it's wonderful. I don't, I don't mind the parking that surrounds my home again, uh, because I'm used to it with the university. Um, and so, you know, I just think it's a great facility. Um, I think it was used well. I'm hearing rumors that there is some push to make it free for everybody. Um, a- and I was wondering wh- what does it cost us to run the pool per day?
Well, we're, we're getting early indications, because we only ran it, you know, only a por- portion of the season. Uh, but we're, we're thinking to run the whole pool for the season uh, would be right around four hundred thousand. So when you, when you kind of take that and divide it by the number of days, but, um, we're, we're pretty much, uh, north of two thousand. And, and the reason why this aquatics facility is, is different from a pool is because of all the requirements that we have to have. We have to staff, uh, large amounts of, of lifeguards. There has to be one on top of the slide, one down below. There has to be a lifeguard at every amenity that we have opened up. So very expensive to run this pool. Um, I'm not too sure we'd ever get to a free, uh, portion of it. But we do have, uh, we do sponsor and we, we, uh, provided a lot of, of free swims this year. Hopefully we'll continue that. Um, we have put money into outreach for, for pool, uh, punch cards, and so we're, we're working on that. Uh, Dan Curly has done an excellent job at trying to raise funds for, uh, sponsoring uh, either the slides or, or the building and continuing that effort to, to fundraise for the operations of it.
or, or the building and continuing that effort to, to fundraise for the operations of it. But yeah, I think we're still in a, in a delta where it is going to, you know, cost some money to, to run that pool. And then whether that will be, you know, part of the park and rec, uh, budget or how we, how we kind of get there. But it just depends on where, where that, um, cost differential is year to year. And right now we only had, uh, a short season, but we had a lot of swims, a lot of free swims from people stepping up. And hopefully they'll, we'll continue.
Any other reports from commissioners? For those new commissioners, this is our opportunity as commissioners to, you know, I like to say, give praise to our city and, and what they're doing, but also raise concerns about things that we see in the community, um, to the staff that we would like to see them, uh, address or to bring forward, um, to us, um, in future, um, uh, dates. So keep that in mind when you see those commissioner reports, um, and then anything that, you know, you're, um, you know, in, involved in, in the community is also a great opportunity, um, or events that are coming up to let us, all the commissioners know, so they have an opportunity to participate, um, in those. Sometimes, um, they're, uh, well-publicized and sometimes they're not. Um, so, uh, keep that in mind. Moving on to item number six, staff reports.
Mike?
Go ahead, Terry. I just wanted to introduce just a little bit. Um, some, you know me, some of us, you know me very well. Um, Terry Morning, I've been with the city for eight, nine years. I can't remember now. Um, building inspector under Jane, and thank you for your mentorship. Um, I'm gonna do my best to fill into Brett's shoes, which I have big feet, but not quite that big. Um, so we have, you haven't met since February. And I think just thank you for your dedication because we haven't been idle, been working like crazy. There just hasn't been a ton of items that are hitting us with development things, but we've been working really diligently. And, um, with my fresh eyes on the zoning code, I come from, I'm a building official right now, so I'm come, bringing a different eye to that. I see things in the code. My background is architecture, um, graduate from WSU in honors. And, um, so I just come with it with a different eye. And so, yeah, architects kind of look for the loopholes in the code, but I just kind of come with that. And so I've been seeing things that we could clean up a little bit that are very subtle items, you know, like the definitions should probably align with the building code a little bit more. I mean, it's just little tweaks like that, that I will probably be bringing to, for your input, um, in the future. So little things that we're working on. Um, Hayden Homes has come in, uh, they're gonna be going into parkside setting and been working with them and, and having them fit into the code real well. Been a little bit tweaking, but not bad. Um, and been meeting with, well, we've met with EWUs for their student orientation with Nexus and, and Genie Heart and Soul with Mackenzie, if you, if you run into her. Um, I've been meeting with them and the EWU, um, community engagement office to break the ice and just start into a community development kind of flavor and just get out there and see what's going on. So have not been idle, even though we haven't brought you in so much, but, uh, we're moving. So anyway.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, I had the opportunity to sit down with, with a new VP and the mayor, and we did talk a little bit about their plan and our plan. Uh, so, uh, there's engagement. Uh, he just asked for a little ti- little time to get his team together. He's, he's new. Uh, so we will continue the engagement with, uh, EWU. As far as parksite goes, yes, parksite is, is now, uh, uh, pretty much platted. I think we're, we're platted, ready to go. Um, we do have the housing development basically to the east. And as you recall, uh, to the west is the duplex units of 55 and older, uh, which that, uh, so far will be trained by Gordon, uh, Gordon Finch and possibly in conjunction with, uh, Cheney Care Center, uh, to that end. So you, right now, I believe they're building one, uh, model, um, duplex near the, near the other, other ones to that end. So, uh, haven't heard too much from Lennar. There is some activity there. Uh, there was some, uh, runoff and, and we've been dealing with, with Lennar and some of the drainage designs, and then also up on the hill as Golden Hills Phase Two. I don't believe, uh, uh, Lennar has purchased those properties just yet. It's still in, uh, William Winkler's, uh, control. But there are some activities going on in that as far as the housing goes to that. And, and, and I'll, I'll bring this to, uh, kind of what we talked about as far as, uh, uh, the UGA. Um, w- we're focused right now on, on the utilities and, and seeing, identifying utilities that are basically right at the city limit line. And, and, and if you just go around the whole city limit lines, you'll notice that we have streets that just dead end and that's now the city limit. Do they have water? Do they have sewer? And identifying those areas, uh, which would be the potential, uh, for growth. We've had some property owners, uh, interested in growth and we had property owners not so interested in growth. But a lot of those areas seem to be farmland and whether they're critical farm, uh, area, which would not even be considered. So we've had been, uh, talking with the county on what do we do? We don't want to, uh, kind of lock ourselves out. If we can infill as much as we can. But when you take a look at, at the hundred to 120 or the single family housing, uh, we do have platted land right now, but we don't have internally those 40 to 50 acre lots, which are pretty much primarily from, uh, Hayden Homes and those bigger developers. We don't have that. Um, so that, that's just something to consider. Even though we have enough capacity and it shows in our study, uh, the needs and we are checking the box. But in a reality, we don't have that land a- available. We have every, uh, we do have all the, the, the R1s as much as we can already platted and ready to build. But if you take a look at that capacity and, and being here, you know, we've had a real high develop. Well, when we say high, um, we had 53 units built in, I believe it was 2019, if I recall, or one of those N years. Um, but we also have, uh, tracked, uh, on average of about 20 homes, uh, per year. So we have a high and then we have a real low of possibly one or two or zero. So, but keeping that capacity in mind and over the next 20 years, um, we, we really need to kind of consider that. And I, I don't know the method that, that the county is, is proposing, whether they even know a method where, what they're looking at. But, uh, some type of guarantee in a UGA in the future is really what we, we tend to want to, uh, consider.
Any other staff reports?
I can go on and on. I know it's been a while.
I, I was gonna ask you about the purple pipe. Wh- when's the expectation of that?
Correct. Yeah, uh, uh, Dan's here, but I'll, I'll try to address it. Purple pipe, uh, will most likely be, uh, done probably in the spring, i- i- it may be into, into the summer. Uh, we're, we're looking at the, uh, actual permits for the, the irrigation uses and hopefully get up running, uh, next summer. Um, so we're gonna have, uh, all the connections ready to go, uh, when we get that permit and then, and turn it on. So our anticipation is for, uh, irrigation of 2026. And the, the, the reason probably why you had so many cars is that construction projects never operate on the same timeline on the paper. So, you know, purple pipe should have been done out, out the door by May, through the park, down the street. Uh, they weren't. They were right in the middle when we started opening up the pool and, and everything started coming together. Uh, we fully anticipate that most of the parking would have been over in, in Betts', uh, uh, elementary because we, we, we got an agreement with the school to use that parking lot during the summertime. However, there is a big hole in it most of the time with, uh, purple pipe constructions.
I saw, I saw that many days.
So, yeah, uh, as far as a purple pipe, they're out towards the plant, uh, that, they're actually working their way back. Uh, we're hopeful to, uh, get them underneath the, uh, or close to the railroad tracks, uh, tied up to the existing pipe that's already there. There was a different project that we put a carrier pipe under both the VNSF and the UP tracks, uh, getting there and then going through some, uh, kind of meadowed area before it gets too much to the rain, rainy season to that end. So hopefully we're there and then getting across that, uh, DOT or, or Washington State DOT before we even, uh, shut down the asphalt plants. But we do have, uh, probably the first part of next year to, uh, finish up all of the pipe.
Got a question?
Uh, yeah. My name is Marco Buckles. My address, just for the record, is 15205 South Golden Island, Cheney, 99004. Um, one time I was here for a meeting where Todd, uh, suggested that, that he could bring in somebody from the county to explain how they're making the determinations in terms of the UGA and comprehensive plan. And I wonder if that has happened and, uh, or if it hasn't happened, I think.
Yeah, we have, uh, uh, we do have, uh, a gentleman coming out, I believe, on, and I'm gonna say a, a date because it's not a regular council or the commission meeting because of the, uh, conflict, uh, around that November 10th, November 11th, whether we might want to consider, uh, having that on the November, uh, 3rd. Is that right? Correct? November 3rd, uh, to kind of clear out the, uh, uh, the Veterans Day holiday, uh, to that end. And, and so we are anticipating having, uh, a representative from the county to talk about climate change, but also, uh, he could kind of update or bring somebody, uh, out such as, uh, uh, Scott Chesney or somebody we can definitely ask to, to give us an update on how they are gonna view that other than, uh, what we're getting from Brian of that three map option, which I have not seen. So.
Thanks. Okay. Hearing no other reports, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.